You should call.
Can you call Torres?
Um. I will call this meeting of the Swan and Planning Commission to order. On Thursday, May seventh, twenty twenty five at six P M.
Really wanna call select board to order?
Uh, yes, I'll call the uh, Swan Select Board meeting uh. Do a meeting with land mission uh, to order two, but. It's all three, I guess.
Hey, Ollie, just making sure you can hear us.
Yep.
Perfect, I wanted to make sure it had an actual corner before we uh. Voted on our meeting minutes. Um, next item, agenda review. Any input, Jen? No, Oliver, okay, um. Next item, a review and approve the meeting minutes of March sixteenth, twenty twenty five. I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
And like make a motion that we approve the minutes of the meeting for April tenth, two thousand and twenty five.
April sixteen.
March sixteen. Why did I write March?
April.
April, so. You you did see the April tenth, that was, that meeting's meeting minutes we approved.
Okay.
Did you made a motion in the second? Or was it made in second?
There was made, I mean, awaiting a second.
Okay.
Motion.
April sixteenth.
Yep, motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, although we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. There are two agents, um. Couldn't find my name. Alright, review, public hearing and land use. And bylaw update, um. Corey, we've kind of put something together, huh?
Yep.
Finally.
Yep, there is.
As you guys know, it's been a. Long process, um. Between state stuff coming up and people asking new questions. Uh, people coming to us with a list, Earl had a list, Joel had a list, um, which has been great, you got, you know. Things have just been. Uh, a ton of work, and in my time. Never even done this amount of work, like any other. I mean, the town plan only comes, is the only thing that comes close, and we did that last year, for the year before, so. Um, yeah, I don't know, do you guys want some highlights, do you want some? Comment, what what do you, what could you guys use from us?
Well, uh, I guess, uh, probably just the highlights myself, uh.
Yep.
I know there was one area that I. That is a concern of the town, and I know Brian said it wasn't possible to do it, but this had to do with that damn stormwater runoff stuff. On these new developments. You know, looking to have some kind of protections that are down.
We we did put something in about.
Regarding keeping HOAs.
Yeah, so it was requiring HOA to file annual report with the town, and would just contact information of who was in charge of it. And so that way. That that was basically the way we could do it with that, I don't know if we have authority to do much else beyond that, at least you'd have a contact information of. Someone who runs it now. I think is what we got, we can get to that, it's, I do.
And without needing a whole bunch of extra work for someone like Brian or. Christina or Amy, whoever it might be, I mean, that that would fall on the staff to kind of file that away. But it could be. In my opinion, something that you could hold people to if you weren't getting information, I guess, was.
Yeah, if I remember right, part of that discussion and Corey was one that brought this up, was that the fact that these permits don't get reapply for in a. Proper timeline. Creates the whole mess, cause then you gotta start back over again.
Keeping them active?
Yeah.
Once it's gone, it's gone.
Yeah.
And there's no, is there any grace periods like that?
This is where we broke to address that after that meeting. Uh, it's in section eight, which is not part of stuff, so some of this, I still gotta work on the formatting, it was wonky when you switched between, we were almost in Google Drive, and then switched it back to Word. Section eight is, um. So we. Section A. Is subdivision, planning and design standards. And then we created a new A. You already kind of had stormwater management in there, we did put it. Kind of in that section, we created a C, and homeowner association, if a subdivision requires a stormwater permit from the state of Vermont. From the Vermont Agency of Natural Resources, a legal homeowner association shall be formed from the state of Vermont maintaining good standing, uh. Perpetual in perpetuity, the county swan shall require the homeowner association to file an annual report, which includes contact information to the executive committee of the association. Proof of good standing with the state of Vermont and stormwater permit status and renewal dates. So they'll have to file a piece of paper annually, and eventually as these get built, we'll be tracking them. Someone's gonna have to, in the town, mail these out annually and make sure you've got them updated, so that will create some administrative work, lease is written. But this was the only way we could like. Do it so like, then the town would have to take the, hey, your permit's expiring next year, what are you doing about it, or in two years, are you guys thinking about renewal and? Um, I think that's the best we can do now. Uh, you know, without. You know, you guys starting a stormwater utility and having a staff member takes over all those permits, you know, and all that.
That doesn't place, if they fail with the report, it doesn't place any liability on the town, does it?
Uh.
Am I correct, I mean?
I'm not, I'm, I'm. I'm not a lawyer, I I can't answer that for you, um. My my guess is no, um, what it'll be is it'll just. Um. I mean. So I'm trying to think of like. So if an insurance agent has the practice of not calling you when you don't renew. And lets your policy lapse, they don't hold it, but if they do it for a certain reason, and all of a sudden stop. Then they have a liability, I know that that through an insurance perspective, so. I guess it'd have to be your internal practice, may maybe then you don't follow up, it's just you have, hey, you're not. Maybe by just having this in here and the homeowner association getting an annual rep. A reminder that to got an annual report and look at their renewal date. Should con have them contemplate like, oh, I gotta renew this thing. And have that conversation.
Right.
I mean, realistically, the state should be doing this, I know they they have done a good job, they should be sending. Those reports to somebody. What what typically happens is developer usually keeps control of the association until the last lot is sold. And then the association says, I don't want, no one in the association wants to be the president or be responsible. So then nobody does anything with it.
Well, that happens if you don't attend the meeting.
Yeah.
They make you president.
Yeah, exactly, and so, uh. And then a lot of people are like, well, we'll just dissolve our homeowner association, cause we don't really have one for any reason, not realizing stormwater is gonna become the issue it has.
Well, if, uh.
This would at least give the information.
What happens is the town ends up having to come up with the money.
And you're kind of liable now anyway.
That's why I asked the question.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um. It's attached twenty two.
At least now you'd have the information, somebody could call and say, hey, what's going on?
I mean, anything I'll simplify a little bit, and just say that it's required that the homeowner, uh, you know, that's gonna help all that. Because they have to form an association required with the state, right?
So. Yeah, so what we could do is you could take here and get rid of your requirement and get a report, it just says, the homeowner association requires stormwater permit, a legal homeowner association shall be formed in the state of Vermont and maintaining good standing in perpetuity. Yeah. They'd be in violation of your bylaws. If they didn't do it, and then at least they wouldn't be sending you a report.
And then they could file that with the town too, with the expiration date on their stormwater permit. So if the town just want to kind of keep a track of what's going on, he ten years down the road, they could, you know, go, at least they have a document on bio and they can. Look, okay, cause you know, thirty five, forty thousand dollars in our budget for this is. And that's just probably just the beginning.
Cause this would show this to requirement to close the C O. Theoretically.
They should have that.
That would be in the folder of the sub development, which would show the permit, get a creation date, and whoever. That is, I mean, we might have to add. Think about it, we might have to add language into part of issuing the C O. But theoretically, you shouldn't issue the C O on the last house in the development.
They shouldn't issue a C O without, without the homeowners association, this is.
They should have forms.
This this is a bylaw stipulation for a.
Subdivision.
Subdivision, so realistically, a permit couldn't be issued. Or a a a C O can't be issued even for the first house, if that HOA is. Ising.
That's true.
Created.
Yep.
Would be the way I would think of that, I mean, that is a stipulation of their. Of their permit, so the first C O shouldn't be given until this is satisfied, in my.
And even if the developers, you know, put the. How do that's fine.
It doesn't matter, it's just gotta be created.
And then the town would have record of it, at least. Okay, and then. There you go.
So I'm I'm good with taking from the town responding through renewal dates out, I think that, that one. Sentence there is enough C Y A for us to be able to say.
Yeah.
It it was in our bylaws, I mean, you should, you need to create this and and hopefully, and I know Amy's got a lot of stuff in zoning that. It's hard to keep track of all these little devil details that are all over in here, I know, um.
It puts a hundred eighty pages.
You know, how many times is there something just like this, like, that potentially could be a place for Amy to. Our zoning administrator to not give someone a permit based upon something this small and simple. That in the past has just been like, here's your C O, not a big deal, and it gets forgotten about, not on purpose, it's just there's a law.
Well, uh, we didn't create a stormwater issue, uh, you know, this is state law, so we've got.
It's federal law.
Yes, that's federal, so. You know, we're kind of obligated, we gotta do this, and, uh, you know, people at. Team development's gonna realize that's just the way it is now, you know? And I don't want to have to have to see other taxpayers in the town of Swan have to pay for that.
Yeah, but what have you got it off to pay for?
I would think it would be ideal to have a C O's. Being requirement before a subdivision is finalized. That a homeowner's association has been set up and recorded.
But I I don't think you need to, cause it's part of your.
That's right.
Subdivision by, this is in the subdivision bylaw, like, they have to.
They have to do this.
If they need a stormwater permit, so we have that if the subdivision requires a stormwater permit, which most do. You have to turn this, you you're gonna have to show us that as part of your subdivision, and that. I would actually read this, the D R B is gonna need this information before they can approve it, like. You have a homeowner association already done.
Yeah, but someone's not gonna create a homeowner's association if they don't have a permit to the project.
Right, but maybe part of, you know, like how when you go through D R B, it's, you don't get your permit until this is done, it's approved, we need these three conditions.
Pending conditions.
You know, it's a pending condition that'll be in there, so they'll go create the homeowner association, which is. You know, something to do, and then they can go and put together.
I think of. Some of the problems, most of the problems that come up with the homeowners association, the C O, okay, is. C O is issued, the the development is still relatively new, so the permits are in place and the homeowners association is going. The problem comes in five or ten or fifteen years down the road when.
It's not continuing.
So, so, so.
Yeah, and that's where the problem, I don't know.
So what you'll have to do is keep a list of these as they come in, and whenever a property sells. You need a C, you need a C O at sale of a property, right?
It's a technical.
Oh, yeah, and so then you can go and say, hey, you guys have like your stormwater stuff labs, you don't have this anymore, you can't sell your house. You tell enough people in the neighborhood they can't sell their house, it's a title restriction.
Well, that's what the state is doing, yeah, but actually, the state should be the one telling them their permits are expiring.
The state sends it to the last known address, the state does send them, most people do it.
Yeah.
They they just are all like.
One of the problem though is that D R B does not understand there's certain things that have got to be done. They're not looking at it that way. Engineer comes in and says, here it is, here it is, they look at, oh, that looks pretty good, bingo.
Here's what I've long said. And and it's good you guys are in the room, and I know we're not a big community like them. But if if we're going to grow. And expand in meaningful ways, we need to prepare for some of that stuff. When I've been, I've been to a few meetings in Milton. Because my grandfather owns a piece of property that's smacked up in the middle of a bunch of the development that's going on, and I attended quite a few meetings. They have someone from staff. That did a ton of that pre-work that then helps the D R B to decipher a project when they come. So that checklist and that information has been. Vetted, that that checklist has gone through, they have a write-up that says da 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 da, you guys need to talk about this, this and this, based upon our zoning bylaws. I'm not trying to make more work for current staff. But I think at some point, if we as a community want to. Solve some of these issues and make it easier, we're gonna have to put some money where our mouth is. And and if that means hiring some staff to help out and do that. I think personally, that is part of the reason why Milton has continued to expand and has some of the growth it's had. Is because they have people in-house that are working to alleviate and potentially chase. Some of those projects, I know that's a different issue, but I just, I wanted to put it out there, and I know.
Yeah, I think it's kind of the same.
I know the financial things are, you know, that's a big thing in keeping our taxes, I I believe one hundred percent, and trying to keep our taxes low and not spending a bunch of money, but. I feel like something like that could potentially pay dividends in the long run. By saving us, look at the forty grand you're talking about, Earl, right now, this year. If we spent forty grand, oh, you know, twenty grand a year over the last couple of years. On a person, a staff member, to make sure those things are staying up to date, in the long run, they might pay back, is is the thought process, just dropping out there.
Does anybody know how many homeowners associations Swan Chrome has, how many?
We s- we started looking, I, it's more than than a couple dozen. Um, and and this isn't that, that comment that I just made wasn't just about like. HOAs in general, it's, it's a lot about some of the other stuff that we found have been. Has slipped through the cracks because the D R B doesn't have the full amount of time to like. Sit down and really dig into a project and make sure they're taking their. Crossing their i's and dotting their t's. I don't think that's a full-time job for someone, but it could be. You know, a part of someone's potential product.
Some areas use an engineer to do that, go down through and look at a mylar. And go down through the ports of it, now you're paying an engineer, who knows it? Hundred, a hundred and fifty bucks an hour to do that, that's another factor, but you also.
Charge for it in the permit, huh? Could charge for it in permit.
Well, you could charge for it in permit, and that along the way, but you're also, the zoning administrator, if it was a full time, that would be, to me, is part of their responsibility. To detail every. Permit that comes in for.
That's the zoning administrator typically does.
It's usually the zoning administrator.
In Milton, it's the zoning administrator, it's an own zoning administrator.
They have a staff member too that that works.
Yeah, but then it's a full-time position, and they they write out, they do a report for the D R B. Here's the project, here how it has it conforms, here's where there's issues. Here, here are the things we had to address.
The San Antonio City Town, and does Milton have impact fees?
Yes.
That's how.
City doesn't have.
We had, we had this conversation a year.
This was going on for years.
Impact fee. Yeah, and but.
Town can't, you can't use impact fees for staff, though. And you have to use them for.
For offset costs elsewhere.
Right, cause when you do like the impact fee goes to like your library, your parks, your fire department.
Oh, sidewalks.
Each new home has to pay this percentage of the impact fee goes to them.
That's my next conversation, that 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 comment I just made was teeing up to, this whole. Redistricting of Act two fifty and and allowing, you know, our Southern Rope District. If if we can find a way to meet their needs with a with a walkability sidewalk plan within the Southern Rope District, and invested a little bit of time and money into that. The fact that developers would be exempt from Act two fifty in the Southern Rope District.
Up to seventy five weeks.
Up to seven, that's huge, like, that that's my next, once we put this to bed. That's my next plan, we we need to find a way to make that happen, or it's gonna just sit there idle. Is is the way I'm looking at it.
Oh, that's true, so. The way they made them change is, uh, you know, I don't know what the alternative, but it's definitely worth worth putting effort into speaking with. The money you're here with a hundred percent, you know.
But yeah, San Antonio's town charges, it was like two thousand dollars a unit in impact fees. They made about eighty thousand dollars a year. And then you have seven years suspended, but a lot of that's how like they paid. Those tenants courts one year at Owen Park was impact fees, that's what they paid for. They could, they put that money into their new town hall, into their new color works garage, so it frees up other money.
You're Robert Peter, pay fall.
Yeah, uh, there is somewhere, Nick, to answer your question, I just can't find it quickly. There are a list of permits somewhere, there's a list that you can put into town, not that it'll tell your homeowner association, but at least tell you how many of those stormwater permits. Are either expired or in town somewhere.
And you may be able to decipher from that.
Now, I bet some of these homeowners associations can fall apart pretty easily, because you don't, you don't have any people volunteering, I think. Like that.
It's not like the old day, you know what I mean, like, I I feel like I don't live in one. But I feel like maybe in the past, there was a little bit more cohesive community potentially in some of those. Um, developments where now people are just. Busy, for lack of a better word, it's not.
Well, most people are. I think they omit them on purpose because they're afraid of what they can become. They're mostly, they're crazy for stormwater, people get afraid, like, I don't want homeowners associations, I don't want someone telling me I can't have. Blue car in my front.
A gold might park in my lawn.
Well, we've got, we've got one in town, the people have sold their houses to get away from the homeowners association.
Yeah, so most people like. The state almost should create another next, and it's like, this is like a stormwater district for these thirty homes, and call it like a district, because. The homeowner association wants to, like. I was in San Antonio, we put the stormwater utility in. We had to tell all these homeowner groups that they had to restart the association, they're like, we don't want to talk about plants or mowing lawns, and like, you don't have to, just. Need a legal mechanism to fund your stormwater projects.
Yep.
And permit.
Um. And so, so we.
So are we gonna knock up, I guess we can do it while we're in here.
Yeah, just redline that, now, uh, just so I'm better understanding, once this meeting is over. We're kicking this, the next meetings with the select board?
Can we make a motion to pass it?
You're gonna make a motion to pass it tonight.
Okay, that was.
That's a, and then what I'll do, we'll, we'll hurry up and make the added.
Be a shop, that was a protection.
Do we have to post it tomorrow, Corey?
That was our meeting.
So the next select board meeting is in twenty. Or you could do the first June.
I thought we kind of had it wrapped in the bid.
We have to have so many days in between.
It is fifteen days.
I'm pretty.
Your public hearing.
Can you turn to the twenty?
We we warned this, after the night or whatever, we warned this. And any of these rules, any new rules coming into play.
They go into that.
Because they make a motion to.
Well, no, no.
Yeah.
These new rules go into effect the second we, the planning commission. Approves these, they go into effect for I think a hundred and twenty days or a hundred and fifty days. Which gives you time to review them and say yes or no and kick them back. But they are in effect, so if somebody who can argue that wants that permit funds in tomorrow morning. And applies for a permit, these are the new rules they're dealing with. For that permit, so that's the whole point, that is so it doesn't slow down like. Like now someone can get the permit in tomorrow and you can issue it or take it through its process, um, back up at the.
Yeah, had it in there, we wrapped it in for the twentieth.
It's not enough days, though.
They don't think.
I've talked about that, no.
Okay, Corey. What is the timeframe, Christina?
It would be fifteen days.
From this meeting to the next one.
The next meeting for the select board is thirteen days from today.
I know, from this meeting is there a required time?
So it needs to be at least fifteen days, so their planning commission would bring it to you this first meeting in June.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's a better, that's a better meeting anyways.
And then you could do it during. And how many days in between that one?
I think, I think it's twenty one days, I think that's where we were.
So then you could do June third. And then July first.
Yep.
And then you got it.
Yeah, but.
It's not gonna stop anybody, anybody can come in and do it.
Right, um, usually it's at your public hearing.
It just gives you the timeline.
Don't you agree that first meeting in July, you will move it to rest, the orders on there.
No, this won't take long.
It won't take long anyway until everybody's reviewed it.
And formality. We'll have a public hearing that same night, and that could close out their grant.
You, you guys have the first meeting, then you have to do a second meeting.
Which, you said twenty one days?
I think that's another twenty one days.
So you wanna do June third and July first.
Yeah, so then he goes there, and then they. Technically, any changes you make at those meetings don't go into effect for twenty one days, or they become permanent, they, they, these don't become permanent for twenty one days after the second meeting. It's if anyone appeals, but you still work underneath them, they're like temporary, and then. They become fully effective.
In July.
July twenty second, will be the effective date of them.
I don't think there'll be too many changes proposed, uh, the only thing I can see, once this gets out of the field and working, there may be some things we see we might need to change.
Yes, so we we can do that.
That's a conversation we've already, like, got a kind of a tally, I I hate to say it, but we're gonna get this approved, and we've already got amendments, we're trying to think about and gogging about, and like.
Because you get to apply where like we time, we can wait that three years, yeah.
We could just keep going.
And talk about things detailed, so you gotta pass it, and then, an amendment process is much easier, yeah, when if they want amendments, they just fix one section. Bring in an amendment.
Um, one of the things that I feel needs to be in here, but I'm not hashing it out tonight, or. Um, before this is done, is is we need to look at. Taking, I think we can put into the zoning bylaws, something to do with access to properties, and and. Continuous use of non-approved road cuts. On properties, and making, giving that a little bit of teeth, because we've got a lot of properties that have essentially have turned front yards into parking lots, and. New road cuts and extra road cuts here and there, and finding a way. What's happening, they're they're all over the village, and and I know there's been conversation about that being an ordinance issue. But I I firmly believe that maybe it is an ordinance, but it also needs to be addressed in here. Because if then someone's in a, got a certificate of compliance coming for a piece of property that has turned their whole front yard into a parking lot, and the grass is literally dead. Then we need to have a conversation about that, and and maybe that's a way within the bylaws can give Amy some teeth with a certificate of compliance, but also think that we need a, um. Like, uh, a, um, a bylaw, I mean, um, I think it's all there, ordinance also. Just, I'm all for people using their property, but. There's some pretty vague, like. Yeah, parking lots, that'll be done.
So, section, well, I'll just kind of do a quick highlight of them here again, section one. This is what gives you the state authority, we kind of things, I went through and checked to make sure these all tied up, they, this used to all be green, part of green was I had to check references. Uh, doesn't sound like a lot, but like, the reference check on this, like, so we had to move a section to meet some water quality stuff. Had to be changed ninety three times in the document, and so it's like making sure we got them all, and. And that was like, the, this, this was five point four and five point, uh, five, and like finding all those, and. Think we got them all, but I'll do one more page. Um. We get to our new district, this doesn't show the ones we crossed out, but we consolidated quite a few districts. Um, in here, the highlights in the districts, um, again, I just tie up the table numbers. I, this table will go away, this was hidden in your other ones, it's just, for some reason, there were certain formatting I couldn't figure out, and then I just highlighted the tables, I could see that we didn't have these weird gaps in the table. That took a bit to clean up, um, I tried, I think I got all these in alphabetical order, I tried to rework all these into alphabetical order, cause sometimes people like look down the list and. Look for a logical reason, and it wasn't in alphabetical order, um.
Some of those things were things that were added.
Yeah.
Out of order over time.
Yeah, and so I tried to just rework that. Um. So now a permitted use anywhere you allow. It's Vermont state law, anywhere you allow a single-family home, you have to allow duplex permitted use. If you're on water and sewer, you have to allow a floor unit. We can't require somebody to have a lot where there's water and sewer larger than one-fifth of an acre. So that means any one-fifth of an acre in the tax, the village, or where you have water and sewer, we're gonna call our residential district. You basically have to allow up to a four unit. On that lot.
On point two acres.
On point two acres, and so. People could argue about that, they could do that, at the end of the day, I don't get what the arrogance about, because smart developer is gonna say, I'll build a single-family home there. Build it big enough, if you didn't let them have a four unit, and then they could come back a year later and say, oh, by the way, here's my plans, I want a four unit, you have to let me have the four units, you might as well just allow the four unit up front. Cause they can get there. And don't make them jump through the hoop.
I have eight units on point two zero acres, that wraps this point.
Yeah, I mean, it's a lot of land in the village area. Um, so we did in all the districts, just so most people know. You'll see, it might be easier just to go to the table that kinda shows it all, um.
Yeah, that's a good idea, Cory.
Just so that way we can kinda, I updated that table, that was, uh, you know. Just the last few weeks of, uh, this is a new table that got added in. Um, it was, it's an updated flood corridor, river corridor, uh, regulation required by the state of Vermont. Um. So we just updated that, you had that table, but it's an updated version of that table. So here here's the new various districts, so we we cut out. We had one district that required three acre minimum lot size. That district went away. And we require one acre. Basically in R one, we're still calling it R one, but it's your rural residential district, basically non-water sewer residential. And then shoreline, but we still have, we do have provisions, um, up there, I did put this. Our vision is is that we we used to have three residential districts, R one, R three, R five. Cause everything's based on water and sewer, we basically like a non-water sewer and a water and sewer. What does that mean? Well, in time, as you expand water and sewer. You're gonna eventually have to like come in and fix your maps to kind of expand with it, so I left this kind of provision, so like. Technically, water and sewer, some of the poles at five hundred feet. They can have these new regulations as well.
Where that conversation started is like a piece of property up by the interstate. Currently, that's getting moved to the R one district. Um, that, uh. Currently does not have water and sewer, but obviously they just put water and sewer all the way up through to the airport. That if someone wanted to run, like Cory said, five hundred feet to the back forty to get water and sewer, then they should. Now essentially are they R five now or are they just an R one that has water and sewer? So that's the thought process with Cory.
So we, um. So we strung setbacks in a lot of places, we kept height. Pretty much the same, we adjusted it in some of the commercials to the growth district. This conversation is based on the state of Vermont allows one, if someone decides to come in and build affordable housing, you can't stop it. So we can't, nothing we can do about it, we're living with it. Good or bad, so you know, I I say that in preference that, cause some people start to debate, well, what if we don't wanna allow that, there's no choice. They're allowed, if they make units perpetually affordable, a forty percent density bonus, that means six units on that point two acres, if two of them are affordable. They're also allowed one story higher than your regulations allow. So we had a conversation with your fire department and said.
What's maximum?
What's the maximum your current ladder trucks can get to? And we felt, and I think they said seventy five feet?
No, I thought you said it was more than that.
We both, our thought process was we kept it.
We went one floor below their.
One floor below, except in the industrial district where I think it was just the pool and grains already that high and like the great house.
You. Well, and there's no, there's no.
There's no affordable housing piece.
There's no housing in the industrial district.
So that they're.
Pluck out of that window.
Yeah, if you, there's nobody to pluck out of a window.
What's that?
Yeah, so we did it so that you're not gonna have to buy any fire truck to meet. One new project that comes into town is.
Someone comes to town and we've got our buildings as high as they can be, they do affordable, they can add another floor, well, now our fire truck doesn't service that and we're on the hook for. Two million dollars.
It's like the maximum stories they can have.
I think the way we.
Affordable.
I think five in the southern growth center and your commercial district and central business. Everywhere else, we allow like two and a half stories, so they'd be allowed like three and a half, and the half story a lot of times. It gets built into that is is yeah, yeah.
Like the doghouse on the roof for the elevator and the. Where you measure that from is also.
So what we we also got rid of, you guys just to call it. Building coverage, that's confusing because. I probably.
It's not just the building.
It's not just the building, so we went to a lot coverage, so total lot coverage. These, we didn't touch them as much in shore shoreline, we went from fifteen percent to twenty, cause the state regulations twenty. We just said, look, if the states, we went with the principle, the state's gonna give you a permit for shoreline. We don't, the bill, the town swan doesn't care, you got your state permit, that's hard enough to get, build what you can while the state will let you build.
If you satisfy them, you satisfy us.
You know, so not creating a double layer of of regulation, it's pretty onerous there. We kept it twenty, cause you got you gotta really have that acre, so you in R one, still at twenty. Where it got more aggressive is we went up to sixty five percent in R five, which is the village, so now you're allowed sixty five percent lot coverage. Uh, in the village, that's parking and building, everything combined. Um, this means.
From fifty?
From thirty.
Thirty.
Thirty or thirty five. We almost doubled it. I think we did that one.
Yeah.
What, seventy five in commercial, uh, central business? This uh, is now transitional commercial district, that's your old neighborhood commercial. It's kind of where we're transitioning, we're calling it transitional, the neighborhood. Um, we bumped that up to sixty, industrials always kind of, has that been at seventy five, and then we kinda. Brought everything up to sixty and sixty five. Drawn point future projects. What towns do above and beyond this? If you hit certain criteria that you want as a town, like you built sidewalks. Or you did this, we'll give you a density bonus, or we'll give you a lot coverage bonus. That might be part of your plan, you get sidewalks in Southern Grove Center is. Part of our capital plan is if you build a sidewalk developer, because we know that's an extra cost, we'll give you more for doing that for us.
Or you donate, like, that's how that density bonus is how Milton ended up with a piece of property that their new caperage sits on. The Bro families donated that chunk of land and they gave him a forty percent density bonus or something on a on a development next door.
So those so those aren't built in now, but those are, as you guys.
Those are the conversations.
That just take time to work through, like that might take you guys six months to figure out how to do a density bonus, like. Program that works looking at other towns, but those are options. We.
I have a question of where you're going forward on that twenty percent lot coverage, maximum lot coverage on the shoreline.
Yeah.
Um, is the state keeping that as their maximum?
Yes.
It's twenty percent, so that's their maximum.
Now, now the state. Will sometime, we talked about this to Joel last week, will give you a little bit more if there's no way to get something that's needed in. And we talked about that, like.
How do we put verbiage in there to support that?
And that's all impervious surface and one percent.
Impervious, yeah. That's a state requirement, that's something we control at this point, we have it at fifteen. So you could get your state permit with twenty percent coverage and then you come in here and get your permit and you're thrown out, and we thought, wow, if you went through. You just go get your state permit, honestly, it takes a lot of onerous off your staff, cause you're coming in with a state permit.
Essentially, in the shoreline, in the shore, it is in the shoreline district, my my view, and I think the board, we talked about it. If they can get a permit through the state. Let it, because they're they're working much harder.
No, wait, 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 wait just a minute. You gotta remember, some of that shoreline was never surveyed properly.
Yeah, but that's a whole nother issue.
And state goes through the medium one line mark and our assessments are based on the other. So they.
Your assessments are different.
They done in order to make it correct.
We're not going down that rabbit hole again, Jim.
Okay, but let's put it this way, let's take the shoreline district and put it back to where it was.
We're we're not going down that rabbit hole, that that's not this meeting.
Well, I'd say we go down it. Otherwise, I'll take it to the select board, don't they first bring it up?
So so the argument, all this.
And what you're doing is creating a problem for the zoning administrator. When you take it to what we ended up taking it away from doing towards the road and everything else.
So, under your current bylaws in place tonight, you regulate all of this the same way you do shoreline. Fifteen percent lot coverage, you have the same rules that you have to have. Our proposal, we put our new shoreline district. Was within the two hundred feet or twenty feet and then the road, whatever, to meet the state, they, it's in this map.
Whatever is in the state's purview is your new shoreline district, everything else is rural. So there's parts of our current shoreline district that now will no longer be parts of.
And then what we did to alleviate some of Jim's concerns the last meeting. Is like with shoreline, where there's pre-existing small lots, we allowed certain. Leeways, like you you guys have a lot, my parents own one, you you take a lot on the lake. You you can't have that lot today, there's not much you can do with it, it doesn't even meet any of your setbacks, you couldn't. Put a porta potty on it, you know what I mean, you have your setbacks in the acre. You have rules for pre-existing small lots. We did this in.
If you have a piece of property on. McQuon Shore, you have the above ground subject take, they call them. Is that, is that considered lot coverage?
I don't know the answer to that, the state would.
It's not impervious.
It's not impervious, you're right, I think it is pervious.
You know, they put that mountain system sort of.
I'm trying to, yeah, the mountain system is now the the square boxes.
They got wood wood around the outside, just so they don't need the sloping, probably.
Yeah, the.
Otherwise, it might just fall apart.
Well, the new ones, they're 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 eight by eights that built out.
Yeah.
The old ones, like we have to mount them.
Right, they're sloped be because of the soil wouldn't wouldn't be retained. And now they're doing the boxes because they don't need as much.
But that box. Portion isn't considered coverage, is it not included in your lot coverage?
I would say no, that's a fence isn't included in your lot coverage and that box isn't taken.
No, it's even a even a deck is not lot coverage. If there's not pavement underneath it, that the water can work through the deck and get to the. If you have a wooden deck that has gaps in it, that the water can fall through and get down into the ground, they don't count that as lot coverage.
Well, these things can be ten by thirty or forty feet.
But the top of that is usually grass.
The wood is only five and a half inches wide, all the way around.
This is the whole network, the current one.
So that's that's.
We regulate shoreline under the federal, we thought, put it in the better.
That's why I say the things would be not much different.
Of the regulations for.
Now Cory.
Yeah.
You're showing that, that's the way the shoreline should be.
Let's help.
This is your current map, and this is the new map, I.
That should not be that way.
This is the current map.
You're creating, you're creating a situation, you're.
This is the.
This map here is creating a situation that's hard to maneuver and control. And you're gonna end up with lawsuits down there, we had a lawsuit here a few years ago, it's cost roughly thirty thousand dollars to the town. How many lawsuits do you want?
How are we, how are we going to have a lawsuit? Based upon changing the zoning areas. In certain parts of our town for things that already don't need, but the point I'm making, Jim, is they already don't meet our zoning bylaws, so what is the issue? With changing some of that? Essentially, Earl, for example, your farm is considered shoreline district. How much of your farm touches the shoreline? Not a whole heck of a lot of it in the middle. That middle with is now going to be seen as residential R or R one district. It it is not shoreline as viewed by the state of Vermont, so why would we?
It's the road, once you cross the road.
Why would we leave it in the shoreline district, same with Hog Island Road around by like, um, Hog Island Market. Yes, the left side of the road and the right side of the road are two completely different. Looking at those properties, it's it's two completely different things.
Completely financially different too, for for somebody and what they can actually do on it, it's a whole different world. Uh, on what you can re you can reap out of that.
Same would be McQuon Shore, if you drive down McQuon Shore and you start at. Your at the pump, at the pump station. And you continue the right side of the road headed south. Is very much different than the left side of the road and those homes and those properties and those lots. I mean, that essentially is all of McQuon Shore, if you're looking at it that way, and that was a thought process by. Narrowing it down, making the road the division, because. In in my eyes, it's not any different, the only place we had somewhat of an issue was. All of the development down on, uh, West Swan Inn that is, um. What are all the little house developments behind Jamie Lepans, um.
Turkey Terrace.
Turkey, all of those little developments.
Paper farm that was sub.
But if you look at, look at those lots, a majority of those lots now have been combined into larger. Single family homes.
Rarely does anybody have one lot, most of them have two, three, four lots that that are.
And and to get to Jim's point, we added this after the last meeting. Which we had in your shoreline, it was setbacks. Because we have smaller lots that are in existence, so we went back through and matched the shoreline. On this pre-existing small lot, so you get in between a half an acre and three quarters is an acre, you go from. The normal setbacks twenty five feet, you get fifteen feet, fifteen, you know, they. We kinda look to alleviate Jim's concern is what I heard at the last meeting.
Those smaller lots that are.
But those smaller lots.
Now gonna be in the R one district, now have a little bit different setbacks than the lots that meet the one acre compliance.
And and so if we go back.
I disagree with you, you're making an issue. That will be nothing but a turmoil for anybody to figure it out all the way down. Campbell Bay and all the way up through here, let's keep it the same as it was and leave it there.
I don't, I don't understand.
The state sees the good and terrible.
You don't understand, you can. I'm not about to turn to the top of the road and says, I can do that, you just can't do that.
That happens on Route seven, that happens in West Swan Inn, that happens everywhere, any piece of the property.
You can make it, it's been which way for how many years?
And that's the reason we're stuck in the past, Jim, we're trying to go to the future.
You're not in the future already, you're in the past, you're an idiot, but you are.
We voted on it last meeting, Jim.
I don't care what you voted on, I'm gonna bring it up again and I say we change it. If you don't wanna change it, fine, I'll take it to the select board and see if they will change it. Cause I think they're a hell of a lot smarter than what you are.
So I I have a question, I have a question, so what? Are there point of connection, if we switch the map and something comes down the road that makes things difficult, what if, when you envision that, what do you envision?
What do I envision?
Like, when, let's say we're going to this map, right? Uh, what what problems could arise, like example?
What is example, one side of the road can do this, the other side of the road can do not. Back and forth. And they all gotta meet basically the same standard down there.
What, for example, cause the only thing I noticed different was, uh, five feet different setback, right? Or is there more than that?
We have the same problem right over here.
Ten foot setback.
Where I am on North River. Where I'm on one side of the road. Where the cemetery is, across an industrial park, but the industrial park and everything is on the other side of the road. They have different rules than I do on my properties right there, I have two lots, they have different rules, they're right across the street.
Right.
I think, so this is the first time I've updated this table, it shows the difference and these two districts are right next to each other, so. Just to walk through for discussion. You do have ten foot more setback, you are allowed more uses in the rural district, so if we keep this shoreline. You can't get a conditional use for an agribusiness, you can't get a conditional use for an auction house, you can't get a. Uh, conditional use for automotive repair.
It's opening up more usage.
You are losing the right to have boat storage or boat sales, now we could add that to that district if you wanted to.
That'd be the place for it.
Uh, we keep that on the shoreline, you.
Boat sales and boat storage, but don't forget though, that shoreline is a smaller chunk of land typically.
You'd need a big chunk to do it.
But you're not. Uh, seasonal conversion. To, I mean, already allowed for residential use, that would. We almost should get, I almost think you should take this right out, because. Everybody, anyone who wants to convert, they're in love with convert for everything that you've got. Um. You're dwelling, your house goes from conditional use to permitted use, you can't have a seasonal house there. You could talk about that, but if they're already there, you can have them. These get moved to permitted uses, um.
What is it getting switched to R one?
Yeah.
It's it's making it easier, if anything, for the people that are in those districts.
Yeah, but there's a lot of things that I would.
They can't have marina, but they're not on the water.
But there's a lot of things in the road, the district I would not wanna see there.
Where?
Uh, on over there by the shoreline. Like, um. Kennel, a dog kennel, contractor's yard.
We have the contractor's yard.
Motor vehicle repair, I don't think that belongs there.
But they're not on the shoreline.
Storage container, storage facility. There's a lot of things, it doesn't matter if it's a shoreline, that's a waste of that environment. You've got this beautiful environment, it's there where you can go and enjoy nature. And then you're, um, you know.
Drive drive from McQuon Shore.
I would leave that. Yeah.
Drive west one, allow.
Okay.
And look at the right side of the road and the left side of the road. They are. Essentially have become. Houses, there's not a lot of camps even on the right side of the road, how many, how many seasonal camps are left on Hog Island and along McQuon Shore?
Less than half.
And and everything on the other side of the road. Would be non-seasonal essentially, like I can't, you drive drive McQuon Shore, are there any seasonal homes on the east side of McQuon Shore Road? I can't think of one.
You're saying if you're living at full time, you don't deserve to have.
West.
The ambiance of the.
We're not changing.
The ambiance. Well, you are, you've got people using heavy machinery in the contractor's yard and, um, you know.
That's a conditional use permit that the neighbors would be able to have any input on.
Okay.
Contractor's yard.
Okay.
Same with the kennel, I'm assuming would be a conditional use. So your neighbors would all have input, and if you think those areas, we're we're not, we're talking about taking a couple hundred feet. So essentially of a piece of property large enough to have a contractor's yard, the majority of the back of that property. Right, would be in another district anyways. That could be viewed like if those. That could be viewed like if those, let's say for example, the shoreline district went. Two hundred feet onto someone's property, but that property was two, let's not use two thousand, let's use five or six hundred feet deep. The majority of that property is actually in another district, and the only ch- chunk of that property is that front chunk, does that make sense? That is why Hog Island Store literally has their storage buildings so far back from the road, am I right?
That's why they were required to put it back there because there was a six hundred foot setback for shoreline.
Correct.
In other words, keeping the shoreline and across the road, six hundred feet. Now, the only place that doesn't stay six hundred feet is. When you first go down McQuam Shore because the state owned land back there.
So it steps back.
So that gets down so far, and then when it gets down towards where your house.
The pump house, pump station. But if you started looking at those lots, Lucy's, Michael John's old house, Valen Court's house. Joel's sons, all the way down through, those are all residential, that is all a residential district. In my, in my personal views, you're looking at residential houses. If you were looking only in one direction. And did not know that the lake was behind you, it is all essentially no different than any other part of the R one. Same with West Swan, if you're standing in the middle of Earl's Field by Earl's House. That that's that's not shoreline district, it shouldn't be governed in that regard. And the state, we're opening up issues because the state is not even gonna look at it as shoreline, if they're only gonna look at the part that's down by the lake. What's up there will be in a whole nother district that's a part of something that's even different in a view.
The shoreline, state shoreline is what, two hundred and fifty feet?
Or the road.
Or the road.
Or the road, whichever is.
Or the road, whichever is posted.
So Pickle Point, all of those camps down Pickle Point, all of that would be looked at as shoreline. And then behind that, now I don't know if that's in in land trust or not, but I I believe it is.
Yeah.
But if it wasn't, behind Pickle Point, could be looked at as R one. And that was the other thought there, knowing a good chunk of that is in land trust, allowing some of those homes. Off of over by like Benny's and and um um. Rainey's and then as a market, like those house of the Chinies, like some of those homes are in. Being zoned as if they are shoreline. When that is, that's, those are residential, they're not even near the shoreline.
And there's a good chunk here that our bylaws don't matter because can't develop one.
That was the other thought.
You got it.
So you know, there, if you look at Hog Island, a good chunk of that is all green, that's in, that's in land trust.
You got it.
And there's pull that one back down again, and there's more of that going into land trust.
So.
I guess we're arguing over half that amount of land.
So the thought is to allow what is there to have it a little bit easier to do what they want on their property, knowing that a good chunk all around. All of those pieces of property are are reserved in perpetuity. Like if you look at the peninsula and Hog Island, what is that, fifty percent of it is in is conserved?
Yeah. And then we look down here on McQuam Shore, it's all conserved.
And look at the McQuam Shore. If you looked at that, it's it's essentially right up to the road, the Friends Farm, like.
All of it, yeah.
All of that is is in conservation, so we're running out of space. The town of Swan has fifty percent.
Fifty-two, fifty-two.
Left. We were at forty-eight uh in trust, so we've got fifty-two percent left to develop, we we gotta make.
No, we got forty-eight percent left.
And then take out roads.
I thought I thought flip rivers.
Take out roads.
Yeah, take out the roads and and the current construction, we we've gotta start.
Wetlands.
That's a hundred years.
Allowing. The only way we're gonna build tax base is allow growth.
Well, we're in the public, you know, the doctor, the land trust being the last in the state of hell on Swan.
Well, that was the conversation we had when we did the the town report, the the town plan, it was. Not saying we don't want more land in land trust, because I believe the farmers can do what they wanna do with their own land, but it's really handicapping some communities like us.
I would take it, we're taking the future of our young people away.
And 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 I understand why, and and the conversation was, you know, New York has a thirty year, forty year note on it, maybe that makes a little more sense. But that's a whole nother ball of wax.
Uh when you go into these uh R one years, yeah, taking that old shoreline and turning it to R one. Are you gonna, the R one lots are smaller or bigger than the shoreline?
Same size, they're both, if you're creating a new lot in either district, it has to be an acre. What we did, I think what I heard at our last meeting to alleviate some of Jim's concerns. Was to put the information into the R one district for pre-existing small lots. Because the issue we heard was setback on these small lots down in here, there wasn't enough setback to get a house or something built, so we said, well, we'll do what we do on the shoreline. As the lot gets smaller, we we give you less setbacks so you can build more footprint on it, um. Honestly, like, I. I mean, we only allow. I don't know if this makes anything, but I mean, if we bumped our one's lot coverage twenty-five or thirty, it's no brainer to get out of it, because only small lots, you'll get more lot covers. Then you're only allowed twenty percent now in both districts. R one, we can bump our, this we gotta play within the state's rules. You bump that, they win. If we bump that to twenty-five or thirty, it doesn't make much of a difference. And then all of a sudden, they they probably would like it better because the setbacks a little more, they can build something a little bit bigger, they don't need the condition of the the variance, like. I don't know.
Wow, I'll let you, the group take the policy decision, plenty is like small, yeah, those are all small lots on the shoreline anyway.
And that, and that's why we.
And they do need setbacks too, so it's like really squirming, yeah.
So these lots that are now no longer in that shoreline that are in the small. Are given some leeway to continue to grow based upon their lot size. There's like from this lot size to this lot size, you can have X. From this lot size to this lot size, you can have X based upon non-conforming lot sizes.
All you're doing is creating a situation where a zoning administrator has got to work hard to try to get it. Keep it the same as it is and it's simple.
She agreed with us when she was here.
Yeah, I I watched the episode, the last episode, and it didn't, we didn't say that it would be easier, um. I did notice that kennel is on shoreline district.
Oh, maybe.
As conditional use?
Yeah, it was.
Oh, maybe I missed it in the.
With storage containers. I yeah, I feel like those storage containers should be on shoreline. I don't think so, I think that.
Be careful. Additionally, one here now.
Is there one here now? Maybe.
There's a one here.
I mean, but that would be um, that would be kept.
Storage container?
It's existed.
Well. Wasn't it one of the McQuam Shores somewhere or for golds anyway that one time?
I'll fit floods, they're waterproof.
I mean, it could be pre-existing and that's fine, but um.
They show up.
Moving forward, it's a waste of the impervious surface, wouldn't you?
For some reason.
They do a lot of places.
Jim, what about your other thing? You had three things highlighted in three different pages.
That is going to something else.
The access permits.
The access.
Whatever.
So some of those things Heather, some of those tweaks of removing things like that.
Yeah.
Should. Be what we're gonna work on in the next round. Like when we were talking about already having tweaks, if if some of those things are things we wanna take out of some of those. Like that we've missed along the way, those are some of the amendments we can do down the road much easier.
Yeah, I'm surprised they.
I will get that new map.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, we, the other big thing we did in the districts, uh all the districts, and we kinda shrunk the setbacks. Um, we shrunk the setbacks, cause you guys had variance rules and. Variance is your subjective, like why'd you get him a variance, not her? Why'd you give her a variance, not him? So what we did is in most of the districts is we. You got a thirty percent variance, we just kinda made it permanent, that's the new setback, cause. Basically, we're told they're never denied anyway, but we got rid of kind of the ability to do the variances by the like, no, fifteen feet is fifteen feet now, not twenty-five feet with thirty percent variance, it's seventeen. And just just have it kind of in stone. Um, the one thing I think we gotta talk about districts tonight, I called Ross about it, and actually goes to Town Hall's town, we talked about this, and I didn't make a change, but they actually don't do it.
What's that?
Town Hall's town, so right now, the one thing when I was going through this, I realized, oh. If someone has a third of an acre, like are they allowed five units or six units to this new state law where there's four? Town Hall's town, which got a housing grant, planning grant from the state and the regional plan by law modernization. And I think it's that basically you're allowed as many units as you can fit on the footprint of your small lot. That's how ours is currently written. We can make that adjustment tonight and I can write it in.
You can have as many units as you can fit on the lot.
So for example, I got an email from Christina this week that said someone's looking to take a building, it's in existence and turn it from three two-bedroom units to six one-bedroom units or something like that.
Well, if he would say three two bedrooms and add thirty additional one bedrooms.
But he wasn't, it was in the same building.
In the same building, would not add any more pervious surface, nothing.
Technically, under this, this would be allowed.
Yep.
Now, I know we talked about the four unit cause the state required, but question is, you wanna be like Town Hall's town and kinda like let it be allowed, or do you wanna take more of the approach?
He has point two five of an acre.
But if you fit in the building that's already existing and he can get enough parking that's required for that and can fit it into lot coverage?
Should it be allowed?
It's allowed. Do you guys wanna make that allowed, or do you want?
I figure if it's making it easy, we need to do it.
So I mean, you know.
Do you wanna?
How many of these, this regional planning say they want us to create in Swan? Was like seventy-something a year?
Yeah, and you do about nineteen.
It's gonna take that to do it, it's gonna take that kind of thinking in order for that to ever pass.
Probably be considerably more affordable too.
Uh huh.
Those, yeah, and so what the concept is in the state, kind of in this, everyone gets, Town Hall's city particulars mad about some of this stuff. The thought process is is that it's easier, I did this in Edinburgh last year, I took a four thousand square foot house, I bought, Sean was the realtor. And we just resliced it up and now it's five beautiful brand new units. I didn't add anything to the outside, people driving by, I don't know, I went from a. Fourteen hundred square foot three-bedroom unit to a seven hundred square, or six hundred square foot one bedroom and an eight hundred square foot two bedroom. I mean, we did a lot more work than just that, we redid the whole building, but by, and what I've argued, and again, this is from my perspective. Investors will buy that old junky looking building in town, this was an old rough shape looking building, but because I got that extra unit, I could go to the bank and said. I want to add this unit and this will bring in this much extra revenue and this helps me get the loan to do all the work to the rest of the building, by adding that unit, I can now do the whole building. Um, and so it kinda helps with the revitalization of of rough property, so. I think there's merit to it, I just wanna make sure we discuss it so it didn't surprise anybody, but like right now, so like what a lot of towns would do is say, oh, you're allowed those four units on that lot. And then any additional unit requires this much more square footage of lot. You don't wanna do that, we can leave it as is, if you wanna maybe do something, I can, but right now, just so you know. They could basically build, I think after four units, they do have to go for conditional use, so they'd still have to come and say, I want six units. Instead of four, so it's still easier if they want the four units, they can get a permit. Fly, not go to DRB, they want five, six in that building, they just come to DRB and say, here's what, I got my number of parking spots required, I'm under my impervious surface and here's what we're doing.
They got the same footprint.
Same footprint or up to their sixty-five percent now there, I mean. That covered, I think it's gonna get eaten up by parking, cause you add two more units, you have to add a minimum of three spot, of course, they lost three spots about. It's a hundred and sixty-two square feet of parking spot, not counting the access into the spot. About three hundred square, so you need nine hundred square feet of impervious, which is ten percent of lot coverage just for those extra two units, so they gotta. It's not gonna be like willy-nilly, cause like you still gotta work with your, but you're using your lot coverage to dictate the number of spots lot or thing more, but that allows someone like. Maybe Sean's got four tenths of an acre, instead of splitting it into. Two four units and going through a subdivision, and you guys haven't figured out how to renumber the street, he might just say. I can get eight units in here no matter what, and put the parking in, I just build it as one eight-unit building instead of two four-unit buildings that are just stacked, I think it allows a little more creativity for the town and the developer.
And that is the concept of bringing up the percentage of of lot coverage in the village over the rural areas. What's happened is we've created a massive amount of urban sprawl in Vermont by the requirement of Act two fifty and tight zoning requirements. And this isn't just a Swan thing, this is this is statewide, this has gone on, so it was even easier, cheaper for me, instead of saying, well, here's a lot in the village. Now, say it's a quarter acre, I'll take your lot in the village, and it's got an old rotten house on it. Well, instead of tearing it down, because I'm gonna still spend eighty, ninety thousand for the house, I still gotta tear it down now. And rebuild on it, but my setbacks were so tight, that math equation didn't work. It was cheaper for me to go out and see somebody in the in the town who had some extra land and buy a one-acre lot. Because my lot coverage was so much more that I could put on that one acre lot, a one acre lot in the town was cheaper than a quarter acre lot in the village was.
It's still a lot, so we're in, they were too kind of big.
Yep, and you still need to go, it still was cheaper than that, at that point, you could put it in septic and well, drill those in, it was still cheaper to do that. And now I've got a nice, clean, pretty lot to work with and I'm not in the village, I don't have to tear the building down. By going up in lot coverage, what that does is promote people to wanna build in the village. Versus out in the town, and we're we're helping to curb the urban sprawl, keeping the wrong countryside.
Well, you can't, you can't build half of it.
You can't build it, you can't build it half of it now, you know, and so, uh but that's, it's helping to combat urban sprawl. With the higher lot coverage in the process, cause now a builder can go, or a developer can go, if I can get four units in the village, I will, but they couldn't do it with the duplex. The duplex, it was, the math didn't work, but if I can get four units on that, I'll tear down the old rotten house. And I'll put a four unit on it and we'll bring a tax base of a property that was worth a hundred and fifty thousand to the four hundred thousand now.
Well, that's what you've done right here.
That's just what we've done.
That's what we've done.
I'm applauding what you've done, I'm applauding.
The only thing that I have, and I'm gonna make a motion tonight. That I would like to make a motion that we put the shoreline district back to what it was prior to March first.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second it, but I I mean, I need there to be discussion about it, cause I really wanna see the reason why it's ten feet difference. It what from what I see, and I could be out to lunch here, I see a ten-foot difference, and I see there's different conditional uses. That's what I'm seeing as a difference.
Because they kept out some of the. In other words, you can't have warehouses and this type of thing until you get at least six hundred feet back away from the road. Or on that side. Now, the problem, the big problem as far as I'm concerned is out on Campbell Bay. Because first of all, you've got a shoreline district and then you've got a narrow shore, and then you've got everybody else and they're basically been in shoreline, let's leave it in shoreline. And that allows for the smaller lots and etc.
This is. Motion been made and seconded.
So it allows it for smaller lots, what do you mean?
Well, they got, it's up there now, it's a hundred and fifty.
Oh, I see, because you need, you get an extra. You, if you're in residential, you have to build ten feet farther from the road, right? Because this setback is is ten feet.
Actually, it's the same in the front, it's you have to build ten feet towards the middle, it'll be a lot more, be excited.
So.
The acreage is the same in both districts, but.
Acreage is the same, but but you can fit a bigger building on a smaller lot?
Hmm.
On the shoreline, right?
No.
No, it's still twenty percent coverage.
But you can build it closer to.
You can build it bigger.
Closer, you can build it closer to the edgier property if it's in shoreline.
If.
I'd take the lot coverage over the the setback all day long.
The R one is going to open up, like I said, if you take a right onto. What is the road that goes down to your house, Earl?
Campbell Bay.
Campbell's Bay Road, and then take a left, what is that, the first left?
Uh Church Road.
Church Road. All of those homes on Church Road right now are handicapped to the twenty percent lot coverage.
Yeah.
And or some of those other things that will allow them, which is a residential, is is residential, and they're not even near the water there.
Same with, same with the Tabor Farm.
Same with the Tabor Farm, like all of those homes are, most of those homes are not even, whether or not they currently are a way.
I can't even see the water and I've been added on there on McQuam, I can't even see it. And I'm I'm a, added to that district as well.
So what it is doing is putting. So what it is doing is putting current homes that are more like the surrounding R one into those specific districts. Along with simplifying, like, I'm the prime example is, I, I will say I see Jim's point with the six hundred foot. I s- I s- I understand it, but I think everything that is north of Route seventy-eight that is blue on that map. The vast majority of that is residential homes that are not on waterfront. Like, look at, look at your orchard, for example. Is is considered, or what was your orchard, it's considered shoreline. Other than the the chunk that touches it today.
Which which would not be permissible today under these regulations, because that's an agribusiness.
Under, yeah.
Yeah, wouldn't be permissible today.
Yeah.
You couldn't have that business there today. The bylaws aren't effective. The current ones today, the new ones, yes, but not these ones as it sits today.
That, that whole.
You couldn't have that business anyways. Couldn't do it.
So by putting though that large chunk of what's vast farmland, no different than county road, in my eyes. The same, it's, it's more equitable to those homes, like someone buys a house there, doesn't realize that shoreline district could be putting themselves at a disadvantage over a spare supply.
Where is the disadvantage? Let me ask you a question. Where is the disadvantage of being in the shoreline?
What is the advantage of it, Jim?
The advantage of it is it's the fact it's easier to administer from the zoning point of view.
To our job.
The only thing that comes up with the state is the two hundred and fifty feet. And that is all they control. It's just for flood and et cetera.
And their permits.
The building, no, the building permits are issued by zoning and the additions and everything else is issued by zoning.
Correct, and by aligning with that, it will simplify. Amy said it herself when she was here, she agreed and understood. The whole point is to simplify.
When did she agree to that? Can you tell me?
She said it on a post-it.
It was on video, in her last video.
Yeah, it's in the video. I I did see her saying that would make it a lot easier. She did say that.
She was, she agreed only because she was concerned about her personal lot down there.
That's a whole different subject.
I know that, but that's all she brought up. She did not bring up the rest of it.
No, she said, I agree. She literally said, I agree. It would make things easier.
Oh, all right.
I I I'm just.
You have it your way.
I'm not trying to have it my way. We did, like I said, we did our own vote on this one, Jim, and I.
Okay, but I still disagree with you.
That doesn't, that doesn't change the fact of the matter that you were rude about it.
Well, you've been having shit to work with. I'll tell you that.
All right, let's take a breather.
I'm not dropping it right there. You aren't exactly easy to work with.
Okay, hold on for one second. So, um, we can always add it back later if it doesn't work out, right? We can just change the.
If there was to have an issue, if someone was to have an issue, now what I foresee, and and like I've said before, Jim. You, some of the reason you bring good points is because of your experience as a lister, but also sometimes I think that makes it difficult to make decisions surrounding things because you're thinking about the lister aspect of things such as along McQuong Shore and how the town looks at some of those pieces of property that need to be reserving. That is a compartmentalized, separate issue from what we are doing here. That is not gonna change whether we make this change or not.
It has nothing to do with the listers, okay?
Okay, I'm just.
I'm only looking at it from the respect of what is easier for the people on one side of the road and the other side of the road in communication in the rural area. Why can I do this, but I can't do that? That's been the big question. It's been that way for, I don't know how many years now. Let's leave it that way. Get away from it.
I mean, I I will say, I'm kind of.
So we've got some very mature goal and it's getting late.
I will say that I, I want, and I think that's usually my stance, I kind of disagree with, well, he gets to it, why can't I? I don't like that because you know, there's plenty of places that have been, um, pre-existing buildings that get away with stuff that other people can't get away with, so. Flowers by Debbie. We couldn't do that again, could we? I don't know if we could do that again.
I don't know.
There's a lot of places like that. It couldn't be built again because of the zoning. And, um, so.
Downtown, every downtown, the block.
Could be that way, but you're gonna find that everywhere. They can do it, why can't we? Well. The different time we were able to do that, we now want to change the environment of our growth. So we're no longer allowing large, you know, projects, whatever.
Look at this building, could be built with a lot coverage.
So, life isn't fair. We all know that, right? So sometimes your neighbor gets to do stuff that you don't get to do. Um, sometimes we'll bigger lots, some people have more area for a longer driveway. That's just the way life is, right? But the only thing, I I see your passion about it and I totally get it. The only thing I see different is the ten feet. Everything else seems to be this, the lot coverage is twenty percent of both. I did check that for you.
It's just what isn't, what isn't allowed.
I know you'd rather have more lot coverage.
Plus what is allowed down there too. You gotta look at that.
What's allowed. And I think it's actually simpler by saying if you're on this side of the road, you're on the lake side to the road, you fall into this category. I think it's actually simpler instead of more difficult than what you're saying, Jim. That's just my opinion as well. I think it's, it's actually creating more cause will on this side I can do that, but but like in the back of my law. I can do different things than I can in the front.
The majority of what your law is in.
Yep, and so in that case, I have a different, I have a whole different.
Well, you could be considered R one where you are, the majority of your law is considered R one.
It will be R one.
No, currently, as we're saying.
No, I know. I've got almost eight acres there.
So you would be considered R one, so nothing's really gonna change on your law.
I'm not worried about me. I'm worried about the people who don't have a voice.
Yeah.
I think that it's actually creating more difficulty by including the other side of the road than it is by, like you take you know, HD's law right now, he couldn't be a contractor's yard over there. And and he was able to develop that and make a very nice development back there, and people still bought those homes with the contractor's yard in the front of it. So, so that was there first, and they're accepting that moving forward. And and nothing would change as he continues to develop through that property in there. So I think it's more difficult by adding the other side of the road than by keeping it all on the lake side from the road, just my opinion on it. Um, and I know you're saying from the zoning perspective and you're, you're thinking about lawsuit concepts of it, but I think it actually simplifies it. If you're on this side of the lake, of the road, on that side of the lake, there's your rules. If you're on the other side of the street or more than two fifty, then you're good.
I do see that question talk a lot, people asking which district in Manhattan, and it would say on, well, if you're on the side of the road, this and that, it would not.
Right, is the road between you and the water? Uh, yeah, I'm looking at a property on the other side of the road, then this is what you are. Versus actually having to figure it out and chase it out. Most of your realtors aren't gonna know, most of your attorneys aren't gonna know until they go and do the work. Your engineers will know.
Nine percent will know.
They don't know.
They don't even know it's only.
They don't know until they go to try to do it. That's all. R one would allow a lot more usage of that property. That's kind of the biggest advantage of it.
Not really, in my opinion.
Well, ten more feet.
It's not just the feet, it's what's allowed in R one versus shoreline.
Correct.
It would allow more things in R one.
All right, so motion's been made.
Are you looking at it?
Yeah.
You look at the question.
Not that Jim proposed one, but would be allowed.
Well, I very know. Okay, let's go back. Evidently, I'd second it.
The motion's been made and seconded, and there's been discussion.
Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. In favor of Jim's amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by nay.
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 Motion fails.
Take care of that.
Okay.
Okay, now. Section three point two, access requirements. Access of the right-of-way, back down, one. For three lots.
That's your current regulation, we didn't change it.
Shouldn't be three lots. Access by a right-of-way without frontage on the other with a twenty-foot with allows for three lots going in.
Access by right-of-way.
That's gonna be a fifty-foot right-of-way with a cul-de-sac for three lots minimum. Now, the three lots have gotta come out of there and it's either gotta be one or two.
So that is a change that didn't get changed based upon our new nine-one-one's road standards.
Lots, three lots is a road.
Three lots become a road now. That was a change, so that's an edit that just didn't get caught. Because the reason this is coming up.
I mean, I don't, I, I I get that, I mean, I think probably around three lots. We can make that, but do you wanna, do you wanna have a cul-de-sac just for three lots? And they go with the amp.
And so for after.
Then I have to have a cul-de-sac.
The, per our new state, per our new road standards? Three or more, you need, you need a turnaround and it needs to meet seventy-six.
If the town's taking it over, basically. If the town's taking it over, it does not have to be at seventy-six.
Is it a state requirement to have that?
It's a nine-one-one requirement that meaning.
I have a cul-de-sac.
I, at three, because it becomes.
To have a road, it had to be a road for E nine-one-one.
Becomes a road.
But you don't need a cul-de-sac.
We, I believe we changed it to have a turnaround at three or more.
Yes, we have to have a cul-de-sac for fire and rescue.
At three or more.
On three lots or more.
We did that to unify with the, the nine-one-one standards, which were three or more.
Well, that's gonna be similar every county.
Well. At three or more, it needs to be a named, it's a, it's called a road at that point for nine-one-one standard.
Three or more is considered a road and it gets a name. And if it's considered a road, it needs to be fifty feet.
And that's the road standards we just pulled into this. Before we were four. Previously, it was four or more. So that's why that read three still. That was, that was a spot that probably just didn't get changed.
Are they supposed to be changed to two then?
That should have been changed to two when we changed everything from four or more is a road to three or more is a road because of the way the state nine-one-one regulations feel.
Well, I'm gonna just reference E nine-one-one standards because I can tell you right now. There's a big push to redo all fire code and fire standards in the state, and I guess as a follower, it'd be less restrictive.
Yeah, but that's not a fire standard, that's a, is that considered a fire standard or is it just a nine-one-one? Um, numbering.
That's where, you're doing, like, they're gonna give it a dual stairwells, like, the state's gonna get over three, up to four stories, they're not gonna require a second stairwell.
Yeah, but I don't know that under the same standards as the numbering, where that came from was the road, the drive, uh, the road naming and house number in standards of nine-one-one, which is not a fire code issue or my, my function is separate.
The whole, well, I won't get started, but the state screwed that up right from the get-go.
The road.
For nine-one-one, nine-one-one address.
And and part of the problem was Christina, they were having to name roads that weren't roads.
Right.
So that was the thought there was.
It may be their path's name because they have three houses.
They were, and.
There's because there was only three. They're still making it difficult because he changing the rule.
Yeah.
So then that just needs to be changed to two or more, yep.
So, so I'm fine with that at three, but the state standard here is just that it needs to be a named road. Does not say it has to be past three roads, so it can be ride past two. If you want the local one to be that you require, where you wanna cul-de-sac at three lots.
That is, I believe the conversation we had.
Yeah.
That was, that was, that's been the conversation we've been having all along. Now.
Say you have a problem later, we may add another one.
Well, and that's the other thing that has been talked about is we have a few that were three with, and then gets extended for more and extended for more or added after the fact if it's a road and.
That's gonna make it more difficult for somebody who was.
We had that conversation.
You're gonna put a cost, probably get more money for the cul-de-sac here.
For three.
For three, yeah.
But don't forget.
I think I would go with the state standards, whatever the minimum is for them.
Keep them happy. Yeah.
What the conversation was.
I think it's small-time people, you know, maybe a family or something like that.
Don't forget though, that is three lots. And those three, or two lots, those two lots could both have fourplexes on them. Those three lots could both have fourplexes on them, so you're, you're, imagine, imagine for example, at the end of that three lot cul-de-sac, having four of your Route seven apartment buildings, or three of your Route seven apartment buildings on it.
The oneway's got two duplexes on it, you know, and then you'll.
And so at that point, yes, it might be difficult for a smaller person, but it also, if they were put a, a large number of units, that cul-de-sac could be warranted. So yes, it could make it harder for a smaller builder that's only putting three houses at the end of it, what used to be just a little private drive. But in the housing crisis we're in, the chances are it might be, it's gonna be more than that, you know, if that makes sense.
I don't have much left to use. Change to two lots.
Is that it? No?
Everything else in that thing was moved to two lots.
Okay, we're down to we're down to page three dash two.
But that might not be the same anymore because I've done.
Well, okay, roll down through to, uh, uh, section B. Number four. Okay, B seventy-one. B, after the seventy-one.
Driveways, or no commercial.
That's for a commercial. Make sure to put the B in there.
Like that?
No, well, it could be that or the large B, it should be the capital B.
He has the map. Jim has the map.
Oh, oh, he's talking, she's talking about you, he's got the, yeah.
He has that right there, B seventy-one.
Right here. This is what Jim, Jim has, you just pulled up. That's what she talks.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's, they're labeled that way. They're labeling it up for people to not compare.
Because there's a B seventy-one and a B seventy-one B, right, but they're separate standards.
Yeah, one's for commercial, one's for residential.
One's a residential drive and one's a commercial drive.
Commercial.
Okay, I thought by saying commercial standards, we covered that.
Well, yeah.
Because there's also a law. Not to be, but there's two commercial standards, there's B and C.
But if you scroll down, Corey, I believe B seventy-one.
That's standard for residential and commercial.
So you're saying detail B.
That's separate ones.
But I did see it somewhere where it was A seventy-six. I thought it showed a second letter on there.
This says they only use B and B.
This is, yeah.
Detail, these are, these are all different commercial.
No, right here, Corey, this is, he's, he's right. This is, this is the ones we were looking at last time, not that.
A, commercial was B.
That's detail A on the seventy-one standards. This must be an actual detail blow-up.
Unless they've changed, but these were.
No, that's, that's what we were looking at the last time. That's a generic standard. Is there a date on that?
Does that say B trains?
Yeah, this is B trains. East Van Tylers, um. Because I'm not saying wrong, but sometimes they change maps.
We talked about this once already.
Yeah.
It was make sure we use the B here and the A.
So, uh, this is East Van Tylers, sir. Yeah, so they, they do reference A and B. But can I give it a commercial standards then, so that way we can save room?
I think it's redundant, but leave it.
The other one is driveways. Which is section E. Number one. At the end of the two lots, I would put in there B dash seventy-one A for the standard. At the end of the two lots, I would put in there B dash seventy one A for the standard.
That's the that's the residential standard.
No. For the two lots, right there.
The next sentence says that.
No, then you go down to the next sentence, it has to be a uh. A seventy six standard.
So you want a single driveway serving one house to be a B seventy one standard?
Okay, that. A driveway serving more than one lot, which will be built to. The A seventy one.
A, B seventy one.
Yeah, that's a residential standard for a driveway.
Twenty four feet.
Twelve feet.
Yeah, so your current bylaws, you only have to meet the standard when you serve more than one house, if you want B seventy one for every driveway.
I object.
So what this says now is a driveway may not require serve access to purpose of development of not more than two driveways. The or two lots, you can't have three lots on a driveway.
Yeah.
When a driveway serves more than one lot.
It needs to meet this standard.
It needs to set that standard by putting it. I guess this says what I thought he was trying to get to here, if you want all driveways to be. B seventy one A standard, I would just change this sentence and say this, it must be built to B seventy one A standards.
I see all sides of that. I would say that without a standard, you're. Essentially, to be able to get equip, I think we had this conversation too. Essentially, to be able to get the proper equipment into build a house, you've got to put in a decent enough road that'll be able to. Allow the access of a fire truck.
Or do you? To so you're saying to 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 build it, I'm I'm able to build, as you would know better than anybody in here, I'm able to build my own house and I don't have to follow any building codes. Um, so why would I be required to build a driveway of a certain?
That's that's the. I agree with that, but I also know there's a life safety concern there, but it's owner beware, you're on your own too.
I'm all, uh, I'm completely against.
You're going against the two lots, why not?
Extra controls on what people do.
Two lots, right, two lots, it's already there, we're we're competing, it's like you need to do it for all the driveways, one or two.
It is, yeah, for risk.
No, the way it's written is only one lot.
That's when you build it, that'll bend, you're putting the.
Right, including other people.
One lot, you can do whatever you want for your own house.
Yes, but if I what? If I had B seventy, we already, I think to Jim's point, that second sentence, when a driveway serves more than one lot. It shall be built to B seventy one A standards and be certified by a dr- licensed draftsmen surveyor engineer.
Yeah.
That's your current regulation.
Correct.
By adding it to that first one, I would read it as any driveway built, if we add it to that first period, that first set, that first. And this is getting to semantics, so I'm not trying to be difficult, but. A driveway may serve as an access point to a property with a person of not more than two lots and be built to B seventy one A standards, you asked me to add that to that sentence.
Oh, no, I read that as a driveway may serve access to property for the purposes of development, not more than two lots. When a driveway serves more than one lot, it shall be built to the B seventy one standard.
Yeah.
It is two separate properties because then in my mind, where the thought was.
What means road.
It's a mini road and if you've got two people served by that same road and it's a piece crap road. The traffic's gonna be higher. There's gonna be more difficulty with people using that road and trying to pass each other on that road, whatever it may be.
Yeah, so I'm not even debating like, so I think if I write the sentence and add B seventy one A to the first sentence, you're gonna change the meaning of the person.
I agree, no, I don't, I don't, yeah.
No, that's okay, I don't know what you think, I just suggested that.
Yeah, but I think the second one, unless you want it to go to, I I'm not trying to say you can't, I'm just, I think that mean all driveways, the second one, I think, was what you were trying to get to. By adding the A, we made it the residential, but. The driveway serves more than one lot shall be built to that standard, like, it's gonna be be built to that standard for more than one lot.
Correct. And I think it should be that way, my personal.
So.
But see, you got up there, the driveway may serve an access to the property of proposed development, not more than two lots. Then when you go down, when a driveway serves more than one lot, it shall be built to a B seventy one A standard.
So should we do each first sentence, do we need the first sentence?
Yeah. Yes.
Leaves it up in the air.
Do we need the first sentence? Be like. The second sentence.
No, then. No, then you can just say not more than one lot, period.
End of the.
Then, when a driveway serves more than one lot, it shall be built to the seventy one standard, yeah, so the first sentence should be changed to just say one lot.
Okay, then change to. One lot, then.
And part of that too, don't forget, that standard can again.
Let me let me, let's try this.
But I don't necessarily. Need to.
A driveway, because we want to define what a driveway is.
I'm gonna tell you.
I'd probably take a lot more like Sean, I count six lots on it, I think it's a driveway. You know what I mean, I get the E nine one one, just a driveway. You know what I mean?
You're gonna get a name.
But so here, we're defining what a driveway is, a driveway is serve as an access of a property to person development, not more than two lots, period, that's driveway.
Mm-hmm.
We defined it again, you know it's defined later on, definitions, it's sometimes good to put here. Here, when a driveway serves more than one lot, it needs to be built to that standard. Free driveways to the extent feasible shall be laid out, so by creating a number two, separate is the thought.
Separate. Mm-hmm.
Our thought here is a driveway can only be a driveway and serves two or less lot.
Yes, and when it.
And when it serves two lots, it needs to be to this standard.
Yes. Because the other part.
And then these are your other parts of the driveway, where like driveway to an extent feasible shall be laid out in existing linear features and utility quarter. Yeah, like all this. Okay, shouldn't it be three lots or more that it serves, because if you're saying you're. No, if the third lot, it becomes a road.
A third lot.
Which is why the driveway should be now built to B seventy one.
No, then it becomes B seventy one B.
B seventy one B because it's commercial?
It's a road, it becomes.
It's a sixty foot right of way.
Sixty foot right of way and then it's commercial.
Has to be a sixty foot right of way with a.
Three or more.
And the other, the other reason that this comes into play.
First one, the the contradiction, so.
The other reason this comes into play, Sean, is not only for the actual buildup of the road. But it also establishes shoulder and radiuses pulling into that driveway. It allows like, I've been into some driveways before where it's so narrow and tight, even there. My own included, sometimes I have hard time swinging it, but there were the trailer. Um, so that's part of this standard and I'm curious to see, I don't know what the actual. I didn't think it was a ton of, um.
Just shouldn't it say?
A twelve inches of subbase, we're only talking about twelve inches of subbase and that, you you're gonna put in close to twelve inches. You put in a driveway through anything halfway decent.
Shouldn't it say a lot over three lots becomes a road, we're gonna do this?
This is driveways.
Because we want to answer the question.
No, we already talked about roads. You explained what a road is elsewhere, must be, yeah.
We.
Yeah, but you just said it should be next to it and said it's in the description.
Keep going.
Um, because we're talking about driveways only, we don't.
Must define it somewhere.
We don't say a turtle's not a turtle when we're talking about a turtle, or squirrel, somewhere else you're wanting to find that driveway is versus a road, yeah. I think in private road, it's gonna be elsewhere, right, it's just not here.
See, on. Section three dash two or three point.
We do that in three dash two, yeah, that's exactly where we say that.
Three point two, that's where you did that.
We talked about what it's a road.
Yeah, you say anything that serves more than three lots is a road.
And it needs to meet this standard.
One other place.
Yeah, driveways are in three dash three. No, they're in three dash two, it's A is roads. A is roads, B is highway access, C is class four, D is private roads, and E is driveways. To tell you the types of that.
Right here, if you go right up a little bit, private road, for the purposes of a private right of way serving three or more lots shall be considered a private road. And shall be built according to section eight, eight road pedestrian access standard. Um.
And we also did, we added this.
Should we flip right in there though?
We added this part. Proposed roads and inside road test, you know, the uh access to all town, those road orders currently in effect, we could add that to. We added that there, but we could add it. One more.
What was, I didn't understand what that was.
We added it in a few spots, swan and.
Build, town and village, swan and road. Oh, your new, we referenced your new road ordinance.
Yeah.
Take over policy.
New takeover policy, because you want, because you guys want to take over all roads.
Right.
No.
Sorry.
That is where we get to.
If they're built properly anyways. Okay. Anything else, Jim?
Yes, under section seven point eight. Road and pedestrian access. Down to C one. Seven point eight.
Page.
No, this is section seven. It's page is seven dash seven, yeah.
Section seven. Subdivision review is seven point eight. Don't have seven point eight anymore.
Six, no, we gotta get to sevens.
This is seven, you mean page seven?
It is seven point eight.
It's true.
We don't have a seven point eight anymore.
Road and pedestrian.
I mean, yeah, I bet it's eight point eight, I bet it's eight point eight now. Is it, this is where we have it?
No.
Yeah, right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. You've got, we're down to. Road design.
As long as we see what section eight is again, so we can see what topic we're on. Uh, subdivision planning, okay. Oh, right here, I wrote serving four lots.
Seven point eight, you're on eight point eight.
But it it got changed, it changed.
It got changed, it got changed, because we had to add all that stormwater stuff and.
That's fine with that, but.
Same section, just new number.
It's a new number, it's the same words. The sentence right here, this is the same as right here.
Okay. How the road to design, then?
Yeah, I just noticed a change in here, it's there's an addition to these standards. Private road serving less than four lots, we're not gonna, we're gonna take out dwelling units, because remember we said that could be one lot.
It's a lots, not dwelling units, is what government needs.
So private road serving less than four lots, when developed.
Three. No.
Should be three or more lots, yeah. Same thing, up time, we just, we missed one more dwelling units also, just another one, yeah. Because um. We took that stuff out in as many places we could, just because like here. A of those dwelling units, because you can have duplex and then a duplex, and you shouldn't have to build a road because. Rather than accessory dwelling.
You need two duplexes at the end of a.
Driveway.
Driveway, you can't look at a duplex any different than you look at a same thing, yeah, same thing now.
No, you got in there's one, right of way for all roads and not minimal, but fifty foot width. Would you also put that in definition place? Put it in the definition section.
Under what?
Just under right of way. Definition for a right of way.
Any road that is any.
No, any right of way going to a property.
In general.
In general, fifty foot right of way.
Should be fifty feet.
Well, there's a limited road right of way and an electrical right of way.
That's, that's.
You got all these right of ways, but basically, more than anything, it comes up in the subdivision. Person wants to do this, and he says here, well, you've got to leave a right of way to get to the back, and we're requiring. Now to do a fifty foot right of way.
But if.
But it's different on each district, right?
No, so what we would, if we made the changes away Jim's saying. That is built in road, so road right of way needs to be fifty feet, but the town or the village requires a right of way to electrical, they may negotiate thirty feet or forty. But you want it to be fifty for everything.
Well, just basically fifty foot, and as an example, there was one came up here just recently. They wanted a subdivision, they wanted to change this, this, and had made access to the back road. Then let them put a fifty foot right of way in for that property to access the back part of the property.
But the here, here.
What they did for was the future that they may put four lots back there someday. Or let's put it this way, it looks at.
So what they did, there's someone trying to develop a piece of property that has a current thirty foot right of way. That is unsure of what that right of way was for, potentially at one time. They tried to use that right of way to access lots.
No, that's a whole one.
Oh, this is a different one?
Yeah, this is, that's a different one, but I mean, we're leaving, I'm with them.
They, you tried to use that right of way to access lots, but the right of way's not fifty feet, it's only thirty. But they were trying to use it for a driveway, which for three, which is then a a road, which is then.
For three.
Triggering issues with our road standards. But I personally think. You don't, a fifty foot right of way for 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 even a power easement, a sewer easement?
Well, I don't know, what it was, basically, someone was splitting up their property.
I just I just wrote.
And they own this here. So they say, okay, I want to split this off. And this here, but I've got land back here, I'm selling back here to the land trust. But I'm keeping four, say acres back here for future development, well, then let them, if they want that, then let them make a fifty foot right of way for there. Right at the beginning.
Oh, I know what you're talking about, you know, where seventy feet, it would be less than thirty percent.
So if. So a road right of way.
Yeah, so I guess I'm trying to find.
This is.
We could, if if we say a right of way is fifty feet, any right of way, because it's being noticed a road, just any right of way. So I read that, we do define road right of way is that, to be able to build a road, you need a fifty foot right of way.
Is I.
Into a road, so if somebody is doing that, and they read this, and they may want to do that, you say you need a fifty foot right of way, not a thirty if you're gonna do a road, but. Thirty's fine, if they never want to put a road in.
But a right of way can be used not only to access a precinct property, but a right of way can also be used. As.
You want to call it an access right of way?
That's a good point, because where we're.
Do you want to call it an access right of way? Because then an access right of way is fifty feet, that way someone's not leaving themselves ten feet to be able to get to their back lot when they when they subdivide. But my point is, I guess your point is like if. If all of a sudden this chip program passes and you buy it right of way from. Andy's to get water and sewer, who met her, the Montagues to get water and sewer out to those other lots, do you want a fifty foot, but maybe thirty's all you need?
That's what I get now.
I'd be afraid of blanketing the whole term right of way, because right of ways can be bought for and used for all sorts of different things.
I I know what you're saying, that's where I was going.
And the second you do that, now you're gonna cut people way back on their setbacks, and they're not gonna be able to build within that right of way. And they're gonna really get built, I think you want to focus on a road. Or access right of way.
If we make a minimum, we shouldn't.
Even accessible, but somebody can say for farm use only, for access for foot traffic only. Access for seasonal use, there's there's many terms you can use for access beyond just a road. Um, so I'd be careful of using it for all right of ways, I would focus on a road. And I'm not saying it should or shouldn't be fifty, I'm just saying I would focus on the term road.
Yeah, we gotta get it, that it's kind of a fine line here, because right of way is getting used for a lot of other uses, not just development.
Correct.
And who would give one, so so for instance, you know, Earl's got a piece of a lot and I I want to get a power right of way. And it's gonna cost me hundreds of thousands to get, or you know, I mean, huge money to get around him.
I know.
But Earl would be okay with giving me one across his lot, as long as it wasn't chewing up his whole lot, so he couldn't develop or even put a shed or do other additional things on it. But if it was required that he had to give me fifty feet with that right of way. He would never do it and or it would cost me huge money, which is now gonna cost me the consumer, because I'm gonna have to find some way other way around, because Earl's not gonna cut up that much of his lot.
And I think the one I was referring to that I had a conversation with Jim about was the thirty foot right of way was given. Not for future. Road access, it was given to get access to. The leach fields that were back there to the other properties, so and and now that.
Right, that is.
Now that right of way that is that sliver that's a part of the back property. Is attempting to be used as a road right of way.
So they gotta buy twenty more feet of right of way from their neighbors.
If you saw, it's not possible.
Some of them, they can't do it.
So do you need more?
They don't, they, no, but they didn't get the permit, right?
No, it's still.
That's all, they're they'll be back for more.
Okay, um.
I don't worry about that.
No, I'm thinking regards to another piece of property where. Because the person's getting older, his house, it's on a county road, his house and the other lot was separating.
County road.
Yeah. Another one.
From the rest of the property, and he's gonna give.
We need him change that one.
Part of it's going into the land trust, and there's four or six acres up front that they're saving, so my comment was is for right of way to be fifty feet to get into it. Because there essentially.
Or a road right of way.
No, but just call it right of way, that's all it is.
But it could be a power right of way that doesn't need fifty feet.
It could, I suppose it could be in that case, I hadn't thought about forward into that.
Such an access.
I just, I, this is where like you end up in court.
That's not.
And I'm not, I'm not gonna be difficult here, but like a right of way is like to shot like your point like. I gave him a right of way for this power line, well, the bylaw say right of way is fifty feet, so I got this whole fifty feet. I gave him a right away for this power line, well, the bylaws say right away is fifty feet, so I got this whole fifty feet out, like I just.
Attorney's gonna interpret it as such.
No, yeah.
So you just, I'm just trying to avoid. Cause then we all get called into court, what were they telling you, Mister Parent about? What they want was their intent, what was.
So that should be in subdivisions.
Well, if the ring now.
Worry about the other.
The ring now, it's fine, cause it's in eight point eight.
Finds out he didn't want to hide his whole property and did not, you know, cause he was like, oh, yeah, sure.
It's in eight point eight right now, which is, was specifically calling out roads.
Yes.
Like calling it a road.
Yeah, but by putting it in a definition section is where. You make it in the definition.
A road right away would be, well, by fifty feet, I, a right away in general could be any size.
For things that makes sense.
Yeah, cause like right now, if it was a, like I'm not, it makes sense, or it will be. Yeah, he, roads and pedestrian file. But yeah, it says road and pedestrians access right of ways for all roads shall be minimum fifty feet, yeah, but we'll put it in definition. But. Just road right away, not right of ways.
Okay, road right away, same thing. We just wanted that into definition, so that it's easy for us to bring it.
That's the sign.
I actually thought an issue that's been thrown on, but don't be mad. But the shoreline, there's this one property, and she's come in a couple times, remember she's got the lot.
I left you a new one.
She's like, you know.
So you could already do, but she's pretty much.
Give you, you're gonna, what's that? Who is it?
Lucy.
Probably, yeah, and she's still gonna be able to build if the setback and the moving from like two weeks long.
Based upon her, her lot size. And we decrease the setbacks.
Because it's a skinny lot. And it's, it's going to.
Her, her, she just wanna subdivide less than a neighbor.
Right.
Okay.
No, she can't do that, because you don't allow, she can do a lot line adjustment with any of her neighbors. But she can't subdivide a half acre and sell it off to somebody who lives a mile down the road.
But is she still gonna be able to build on the property?
Just three and a half acres, yes.
Well, she, she has that.
She could have three and a half lots, she wants.
Thank you.
She got three lots of like one point one acre or two one acre lots and one one and a half acre lots.
I actually made it a little.
We made it easier, she, her control was like two hundred by two hundred feet. We went one fifty Y by one fifty.
We, we made the new minimum of one fifty.
Okay.
So it does.
It doesn't.
It's still, that's a whole nother.
Yeah.
Animal that.
But because it's in the art.
Unfortunate.
And it would have never made it in shoreline. It's the same set, it's the same dimensions, yeah. That's gonna be, those regulations didn't change.
Um.
So, so I'm just gonna put in road right away here, so you guys can see it going, road.
And so one of the things that we did talk about was even though we left. The minimum lot size at one acre. We made the minimum lot depth and width. Minimum.
At least fifty feet, or just fifty?
They can be as, one could be as low as a hundred and fifty feet. As long as you're still over an acre, meaning it allows the skinnier, longer, wider.
It's only good.
Yeah, wider.
What's the minimum twenty three hundred longs?
Oh, I got one fifty behind you.
So that was something to help in, do some infill where there's some funky. Potential subdivisions.
Hmm.
This is mine now.
That's for sure.
Very intentional.
Alright, so are we gonna make the vote?
You'll be getting a new one once it's finally built.
So, so where we'll go with this, I'll continue to look through, cause I. Looked through a hundred times, but we'll keep looking for errors, you pass as is, if there's any. Like problem like technical, like if we find, or like it needs to be two instead of three.
I think that's, that's very clear that those, that are intention.
They can make a change. Uh. And I will, the only difference that won't go forward is. I was laying through your table of contents, cause like whenever we did your table, we lost the items, but then if we added that section by when I entered and made it two. Get out of the space, and now something might. Got, have gotten shifted to a page, and now make the table of contents, now that that's pretty much wrapped up.
Yep.
Bottom of that, we're good, the tables are good, the, I still gotta, there's this wonky. Section break I gotta fix, that's why sometimes it says. Some different up here than. What we're on, but I'll work on that. There was also things in here, I just actually wanna highlight too before you guys vote. You pretty much replaced hotels, what's done a long time ago, a lodging establishment. And so like on the table, there was not a single district that had hotels, it's something you can build it, we got lodging establishments everywhere. I just took hotels out of the table, again, again, it didn't have anything like, at least one district checked, I kinda got it.
Press a question that, that. If somebody makes a property that was a dwelling of your own. Red button dwelling. And they turn it into a little mini motel, that's the.
A B and B?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They don't need a permit for that?
No, they gotta come for conditional use to get a benefit.
They drove now.
Yeah.
Okay, and if it's, if it was listed as seasonal. By our listeners. And they're using it year round. Do they have to get a permit for that too?
Yes.
Conversion.
So, okay, that's what to know. So all of these little B and Bs along the long shore, there's a lot of them we don't know about.
Oh, Airbnb.
Airbnb, yeah. There's a lot of them we don't know about. What do we do to, to bring those things into compliance?
You're not feeling town grappling with that, um.
Thank you.
Uh, a lot of towns are going to ordinances on. Regulating whether they, they charge for, register it, and then it has different fire safety code, and then you pay a fee every year.
I understand all that.
Yeah, but that would be required in an ordinance versus this.
Yeah. So if someone wants to convert their property to an Airbnb. Do the property owners, the adjoining property owners, or adjacent property owners have a right to come in and talk about that on a reasonable basis?
I think we had this discussion early on in our content, it was a lot of these camps for, at least. Before Airbnb, people always rented them to locals for like a week at a time, so we thought it was very similar.
It was happening.
I don't wanna worry about security and run.
We, we, we do here on Rollax.
Oh, yeah.
We haven't talked about, but they've been converted to Airbnb. And they.
Rather than full time Airbnb or like.
Did full time Airbnb, and these little motels.
So I think those are, we didn't have conversations, but those are the type of things.
No, we didn't regulate Airbnb.
That are in this next round of like getting this thing through and knowing that there's some, some bigger bone or other bones to pick, if you will, and try and see how it can work.
For conditional use?
So is no zoning require, a permit required in Swan to start a Airbnb full time?
No. Oh, where they are failing, in many cases, is fire safety inspections, cause they're not the whole pro rental, but the biggest one, I don't know where you're talking, is subject.
Yep.
It's usually their subjects that are not compliant and not capable of handling that. But they're getting by. You know, they're getting away with it.
They're getting by, because there's no legislation for it.
Now, now what you guys could do if you wanna do some. I did research for our meeting. Temporary bylaw, which goes into effect for two years, but not part of your permit. I just look. I, I would have to do research, and a lot of towns have debated this, has been like town meeting votes on it, like it's. You're not the first ones, it's, I, but I don't think there's like a good answer yet on like what the average town's doing in some of this.
Seasonal is really duration, not really time.
Right. And in the conversation we had was about the seasonal camps, who are still seasonal, because they're like, so those are the boys rented from each.
Thanks for, thanks for, all the people in Swan, they all know. Uh, they had more camps, they never about to pay the taxes and be charged, that's fine, we understand that. But these are permanent motels.
Yeah.
And you're talking year round.
Year round.
It's different, see, you know, if you have, if I see a big difference, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Well, and there's a fire safety issue there as well, as soon as that becomes a rental, even a single face, single unit on its own. As soon as money exchanges hands, my interpretate, my understanding.
What works you need to see it, I think.
Uh, my understanding of the state fire code. Is as soon as money exchanges hands, whether it's a duplex, single family, whatever the money, the case may be. That falls under fire marshals per view.
Let me get you, let me just go a little bit further. This unit is dog friendly. Sometimes I have four dogs there.
Yeah.
Per week in time. And of course, they get three dollars a dog per day extra. So it's, it's a cute little business. So the neighbors next to it have no sighting in what goes on, except that they can go over and tell them this.
Bring in your dog.
And to tell the dogs to stop barking. So I mean, these kinds of things are going on, and they're totally unregulated, and they're getting. They're getting permitted, self permitted. And there's no regulations.
They could have, they permit.
Yeah, the, the state. This, this is a long debate about.
They're not, they're not.
There is, I'm not saying they should, they, they don't have.
They ain't gonna have, you know.
But I can have a rental right now, if, if Earl decides he wants to go rent his house today.
Okay, cause the concept of Airbnb wasn't to buy, I think when it first came out, it wasn't to buy a house, it was. I'm taking my kids to Disney World, and maybe a family wants to come up skiing, so I'll put my house. On Airbnb for a week, and they'll stay at my house.
Sure.
Pay me three grand, and then I take that money to pay for my trip to Florida, I think when Airbnb started, that was, that was.
Now it's a business, a business.
And now it's a business.
Seem to figure it out.
Well, there's another, there's another little situation involved there, and I believe. I don't know for a fact, but you take, somebody has a shed. And they turn it into bedrooms.
For tents.
No bathrooms in it, and the bathrooms are over in the camp.
That's exactly what we have.
It's a bunkhouse.
There, bunkhouse, right, the deal.
The house was made under the pretenses that it was gonna be an office. For the owner. Instead, they made it into a bunkhouse. So now they have two bedrooms and one bathroom.
That's a zoning issue.
Yeah, I realize that, but nobody enforces it.
Uh, wh- while as a select board.
How do you force it?
Can tell it's.
They force it, they send them a letter.
Zoning measure goes, goes out, yeah.
She, she's gonna go, if people call in because someone's got four junk cars in their yard next door. Amy's gonna show up and send them a letter and check in on it, someone calls up and says they're using what was permitted as an office.
Or a shed, to let people.
A shed, and, and they're, they're renting it out for people. That, that's a zoning violation, and our zoning administrator should go out there and, and write him a letter.
And e- even beyond that, when they have to put the above ground something tanks in. The state says you have to meet all of these conditions. Which is to remove these houses, these little shacks, that are now bedrooms, and they haven't removed them, so there's no enforcement on state law, either.
State law, of course, so that's a little zoning thing for sure.
If they're, if they're violating the permit.
After the engineer showed up and signed off on it, and said, hey, this epic isn't working order, and this is the amount of bedrooms about, once that engineer signed off, the state doesn't look at it.
No, yeah, no, maybe.
Makes two bedrooms, they don't have our beds, so you could still throw four beds in a bedroom.
That's the stupidity of the.
Yeah, 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 cause like you go to like a condo, it's smoking, man, man, those things.
So they, they turn.
You want, you have a three bedroom, but the kid's bedroom is four bunk, four bunk beds, you know, it's a three bedroom condo, but it's at least just a couple people.
But they're like, they're like, they tried to keep bedrooms, but they.
Yeah, and if it's not a closet, it's not a bedroom, so you can have tons of rooms, like boxes, yeah.
Okay. And, and, I, I keep going, if you guys got nothing to do.
No, Airbnb is a, that's, that's.
Oh, that's a whole nother topic we'll dive into, I'm thinking late summer, maybe we'll take a, a couple months off after this is done. Um, so if, if. If you have some of those things, obviously get a list to Christina or directly to us, and we'll make sure if Amy's back, you're gonna start attending our meetings. Those are the type of things that she used to bring to us all the time. Um, when she was at meetings, would be like, hey, this was probably, you know, that, that we should talk about it.
Okay, thanks.
The bigger thing is, is the fact they've already have a. Outbuilding there. And they're going inside of it, and they don't need a permit, there's no permit required by the town to do anything inside of a building.
And, yeah, and just sort of sidebar, there was a lot of towns, sheds, right?
Huh?
If it was a shed, it couldn't be.
There was a shed, it was put there as a shed, and then they go in and they convert it into bedrooms.
Which is not just.
No, that's a viol, that's a violation.
Zoning violation, it could be a permanent for a shed.
What?
Not a permanent, no shed, now they have residence.
Yeah.
So I, I was.
You have to be residential space, you're permitted for a shed, not a residential space, they're two different things. How would you think it legitimately be a zoning violation?
But it's a, it's a situation that how you know about it if they're not required to get a permit?
Well, you know about it when a neighbor.
Complaints.
Complaints, how, how does Amy know about ninety percent of our violations is.
Yeah, the neighbor.
Complaints.
Is someone calls her up, or you know, I know Dick Thompson used to do a ride around a bit, when. When Dick was in here, he would do every couple months, would do a ride around, I think, and give a list, but. If, if people aren't letting us know, it's business as normal, because we're gonna assume it's not bothering someone. Um, so I guess that's part of, uh, public. Um, education, awareness is the word I was looking for, perfect.
Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, and I did tell this like we're too like. To, to their point, like we, we kinda went through the update a lot that hadn't updated in a while. Most towns do some kind of bylaw update every year, every six months, some when it's a small tweak, like we wanna look at Airbnb, so they. Focus on that for six months and bring something, they don't open up everything, they're just.
We opened up the can of worms instead of just working on a couple at a time.
And so I, I would recommend going forward, instead of like waiting ten years. With these guys, like once a year, kind of do a cleanup, like here are three or four things we wanna change. Based on things that have come in in the last year, and are concerns you may have.
And Amy was also, has been in the past pretty good about like.
It's just the last eight years, we did the cleanest of this. Uh, this kind of, and we're gonna, when this passes, we gotta update your town plan.
Match it.
Just the last section, which I'll do, and we'll just have to just update, there's a section in town plan that sets up your zoning districts. And we just have to update it. To the new zoning districts.
Okay. Uh, are we gonna make a motion to take this to the select board? Uh, for a public meeting, uh, with.
On June third.
We have the journey.
On June third.
Yeah, I think I have to meet.
Um.
Can we make a motion?
Someone can make a motion. Uh, what I would say is, and I think whoever made, I think my coordinator made the comment. Um, that motion should include some sort of verbiage with.
Why don't you say what you would wanna say, and then you say Ellen, take the motion, and I say yes.
I can say it, and I can say it. Voting should be the Swamp Lake Commission. Passes final draft swamp bylaws. Five dot five, I'll make them tonight, five dot seven. Twenty five. Uh. With knowing that there'll be some final, um, edits made. Trying to give up contents and some things with no content.
That's where it's going with it.
That's the motion I wanna make.
So.
Maybe a second?
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. To be clear, the motion is to approve. The five dot seven dot twenty five swanton bylaws. As written, knowing that there will be some minor tweaks and edits based around formatting. And tables and, um, verbiage within to. Uh, show uniformity across the, um. Bylaws. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Uh, opposed. Motion carries, bylaws have been approved, sent to you all, and after the next meeting, they go into effect. After the night.
Remember they go into effect today?
Please, all right.
They're.
Oliver lost service, like, yeah, so I texted back a while ago, he lost service, and he was.
Corey, they go into effect after today, right?
Yeah, yeah.
They go to elect tomorrow, uh. Tomorrow morning.
Um. Alright, do you wanna post your meeting first?
Alright, I can't argue with you.
We got public comments, sorry.
Comment, any Mr. President, do you need to have another E T meeting before the June fifth meeting, select?
No. Good work.
That'll be the next meeting, I'd like.
Good work, bye.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
They probably hard work.
Is there a second? Second, to adjourns, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. I didn't hear you quote.
Uh, see.
I heard it.
Yeah, I heard it.
And, uh, they're checking it.
You're the good one.
I'm the only one that's the bold.
Bye, bye.
Sure.
Thank you for coming, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. That was a heavy left.